We started taping? We're on.
Yes, at the end.
I'm hanging on that last word though. I'll hear about it in three hours.
Three hours later?
Went to finance last night. They were showing last week's. I went back and Bonnie and I had an argument. She says, "I didn't see you at all. Where were you?"
Or she think you're out dating?
Okay. We have already begun the regular school meeting of the Arlington School Committee of Thursday, March 14th. We've been having some technical difficulties with the TV feed and it's continuing. This may be taped, so whenever you see this. We have entered the meeting, gone immediately into executive session, so we can duck some business. We've now exited executive session and are returning to the start of our meeting. It's now 7:05 and we begin with public participation.
Hi, I'm Rebecca. Can you hear me? Am I right? Okay. I'm Rebecca Steinitz. I'm the president of the Arlington Education Foundation. Thank you for having me. And I'd like to share some spring news and an invitation from AEF. First of all, we're thrilled to announce a new grant program that we're starting this spring. The greatest treasure in Arlington schools is our teachers and we wanted to thank them for their great teaching by giving them a chance to be students again. Our new Continuing Scholars Award, now I'm reading from the official language, will be awarded to full-time Arlington educators to support education experiences that will in turn benefit their students. The award will fund seminars, courses, workshops, trips, or expeditions sponsored by universities, schools, institutes, or professional development organizations. The grants go up to $2,500. We'll be awarding them in the spring and the fall. And people are asking, "How many will you award?" We don't know. We want to see how many great applications we get, so we don't want to limit ourselves. So, the deadline for the first round of awards is April 1st and the details can be found on our website, which is www.ArlingtonEducationFoundationMA, so you don't get Arlington, Virginia, or Arlington, Texas.org. Second, our Spring Innovations in Education grant deadline is April 15th. I'm sure you all know about these small grants for innovative school and classroom projects. Last fall, among other things, we funded training for world language teachers, a new statistics program at the Odysseum, and the Dallin Literary Journal. So, we're looking forward to seeing what new ideas turn up this spring. We hope we'll be getting lots of grants. Finally, I'd like to attend, and I'm sorry I don't have a B with me this year. My B is homesick. I'd like to extend a formal invitation to the school committee, administrators, teachers, and families to join us at AEF's annual trivia bee. The bee will take place Sunday, March 24th, from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. at Town Hall. Superintendent Bodie will once again be captain gowned and serving as a judge. And along with teams from all over town, we have a great number of great teams this year. We have teams from the Arlington Education Association, the Pierce, the Bracket, the Stratton, two each from the Bishop and the High School, and from either the hardest working school in Arlington, or perhaps the most trivial school in Arlington. We have two teams from Hardy and one from the Hardy After School. So, they're serious down there in East Arlington. Now, I hear there's also a school committee team, but I believe you all need to get your paperwork in on time. I was just looking at our spreadsheet. Blank, blank lines for you all.
Paul. Who's your captain?
Paul. I'm captain.
You're captain.
I'm glad I'm here to help you clear up these personnel issues. You'll also, Paul, you'll want a good name, because you will be facing the high achievers. This is just the school teams. The sly ponders, the Stratton smarties, the Bracket boas, the Pierce stingers, and my children's favorite, fight for your right to Hardy. That has nothing to do with us. We've got creative people in this town. There will be fierce competition and the winner, the prize, is books for the school library of your choice. There will also be children's activities. We're totally ramping up the activities this year. We've got a new school representative at AEF who, like, they start talking and I don't even know what they're talking about. But it's not just going to be stickers and crossword puzzles, building things, and trivia and all sorts of stuff. There'll be raffles, there'll be audience participation. I believe audience members are going to get to do the building challenges. And there'll be refreshments. I brought the bee cookie cutter to Wilson Farms this morning, so the bee cookies will be there. And this is all for the remarkable price of free. So, again, visit our website to learn more and we hope to see you all cheering on your favorite team at the Town Hall on Sunday, March 24th, at 3 o'clock. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much for coming in and telling us about this. And we know Mr. Schlickman's going to get behind the...
Hope with a pity name.
Yeah. Okay. And that ends our public participation. At this point, we'll move on to Tools of the Mind. We apologize that you've had to wait. Dr. Bodie?
Well, I don't know what, Mr. Thielman may want to join me in this. We have been, this last two years, as you're well aware, and I think we've talked about this at the table several times, over the two years, in a pilot for a kindergarten curriculum called Tools of the Mind. And we've had Ms. Miko, who is here tonight, as well as other people from her school, and Principal Zertschakoff, oh, thank you, are here tonight to answer questions. The issue before the committee tonight is to do a formal approval of this program. We've talked to the community curriculum and accountability subcommittee about this, but there is, there's two parts to this evening's discussion. One is just to have an opportunity for questions. I know there's been some things over the last two weeks that some people have some questions about in the area of professional development. And in fact, that's the second reason we wanted to have this as a separate item tonight, to talk about some options for professional development, assuming the positive vote of approval for this curriculum initiative. So, I know that you've heard Mr. Miko before do a presentation on tools, quite eloquent one, I might add, but she's here this evening to answer questions. And she also brought all of her kindergarten teachers from Hardy. And if they could all come up, one of the, and Deb, would you introduce everybody?
So, first of all, thank you for the opportunity to answer questions. I have to tell you, I am so very proud, principal, tonight, because I had several days to think about coming here and I happened to be speaking with my teachers today and saying, you know, I know some questions are going to be coming up about, specifically about the training and what that's about, and I have not had a chance to go to the training. And so, my teacher said, "Well, we can give you the outlines of all the training sessions, but we wish we could be there." And I said, "Please come." So, they are here with about four hours' notice. They went out to dinner, had pizza. So, they are really the experts and very passionate about this. So, I want to introduce Debbie Peelik, who's been at Hardy School for 10 years, Debbie? And I've been there seven, so Deb was there when I got there. Lucky for me. This is Erin Eldridge, who's been with us at Hardy for six years. She was at Thompson School for one year. So, this is your eighth, seventh year? Seventh year. And Erica Doucet came on board. I think, Erica, you've been with us four years. So, and they are just fabulous. So, I'm happy to have them here and we're happy to answer questions. Okay. Mr. Thielman, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I just wanted to say the district did a two-year pilot that began 2010, 2011 school year. And we had a committee, subcommittee meeting earlier this week and had a good conversation with Dr. Bodie about the curriculum. And by all accounts, it's been well-received by kindergarten teachers. We heard from Dr. Bodie that there are kindergarten teachers that do not, never want to go back to the old curriculum, including all of you. And it's a curriculum that's designed to teach children self-discipline, the ability to organize themselves, and it gives them the skills they need to be better learners, both in kindergarten and beyond. So, our subcommittee voted unanimously to recommend this curriculum, to endorse this curriculum to the full school committee and to have it be adopted as the curriculum in kindergarten going forward, starting in September of 2013.
Do we have any questions? Ms. Tarks?
How many teachers have been trained and how many teachers would need to be trained?
So, part of this, I'm sorry, is that for me?
Whoever, whoever can answer it.
So, we have seven teachers who have been trained, correct? And we're thinking it's about 12 teachers in addition to that who would need to be trained. We have about 20 kindergarten teachers in the district.
And they're all able to get this over the summer?
Well, could you explain the training? And maybe this would actually be a great opportunity for you to talk about the recent day-long training you just went through.
Right. So, I'll just start by sort of giving you the big picture of the training. So, training happens over two consecutive years for teachers who are adopting the Tools program. The first year, there are two back-to-back training sessions that ideally happen the June before implementation. And then through that first year, there are three additional full days of training. And those have happened typically, I think they were October, January, March. The second year, those full-day trainings continue, and I believe there are four, three again? So, again, October, January, March.
Okay. So, those 12 teachers that need the training will get it. We have the ability to have that ready for them in June? So, before they would leave, then they would be trained?
Yes. Ideally, that is, you want them back-to-back. I know our teachers who were in the pilot, we had to split it. They did one day in June and one day in just before school started, and that felt a little hectic. So, the design is to have it back-to-back.
I want to talk about what the design might be this summer. It's two days, it's two consecutive days.
Right.
And the issue is how to have two consecutive days for kindergarten. But I think this would be a great opportunity, since you made the effort to come here. I think people who are listening would really like to know about this, because I know that Mr. Thielman had an email wondering about the training. Is this another program? Is this a program that we're going to have in the district that people are going to move into without the support they need? I mean, that's a legitimate concern. And then another concern is, what evidence do we have over the last two years in terms of student achievement?
Sure. So, would you like to talk a little bit about the training and what it involves? Do you want?
So, I think what we really enjoyed the most about the training is that it's not just curriculum-driven, it's more philosophy-driven. So, right from the start, we learned so much about why we would do this curriculum and really what it would do for our whole classroom and for our whole idea about teaching. Our whole way that we teach has completely changed and shifted. And I think that once we had that foundation, then that could really drive the curriculum that we're implementing. So, I feel like that was one of the biggest things about all the training that we received is it just put a complete twist on our overall idea of teaching. I think, did you want to, do you want to chime in?
Yes, we actually just went to training yesterday. And we're fortunate enough to meet Dr. Liang, who was the developer of the Tools program. And just having her insight and having her there and being able to pick her brain about things, this was the most valuable professional development that I think we can say that we've ever done. And it's so extensive, because it's so much information, that if you were to get it all in one sitting, there's really no way to digest it. So, year one is more the philosophy and then the content laid out in pieces. So, you're not looking at September to June in one day. You're looking at, you know, chunks of time, so that you're able to fully manage it and fully digest it. We've really enjoyed year two, because now we can look back and say, "Oh, yeah, I can see why that doesn't work or why we have to do it this way." So, having year two as kind of a reflection has been really great. Yesterday, we could just sit through training, "Oh, I know what she's talking about. Oh, I remember doing that. I still need to do this." It was really, really valuable for us in that way. Do you want to add anything, Becky?
Well, I know, like, this year, we were saying when we were in the break room, that it just has been really good to kind of like, kind of do a lot more reflection this year and really think about, you know, why we're doing what we're doing. And then, like, you can really see a difference this year, too, like, having, you know, the second year around with the kids. You can kind of just see it more, how it's, you know, affecting the kids and how they're working together. So, it's been, I just like the way it's been spread out, too, you know?
And a lot of times, I feel like in professional development, we don't have a chance to go back and reflect on it. It's kind of like, here you go, here's your curriculum, and good luck. We hope it works. But this year, we've really been able to collaborate and collaborate across schools, collaborate across districts with other districts who are going through the same pilot program that we are, hearing what they've been doing, trying their ideas. So, the part about teacher collaboration has been huge for us, I feel, too.
And I'll just add one other part, another piece of this professional development is the program also provides for coaching for teachers throughout the two-year training span. So, which is really the perfect professional development model, because in addition to having the day to get information and the underpinning and the philosophy and the materials, you then have a coach who comes in on a regular basis both years and watches you teach and gives you feedback, models teaching for you. It really holds you kind of accountable for the fidelity of the program. Because as you know, whenever you implement something, you want to make sure you're doing it the way it's intended to be, because there's reasons for it being that way, and you want to make sure you get the results that is intended. Ms. Tarks?
Okay. So, I assume then the cost, the training is part of the cost of the program, right? Because that's a lot of, I assume, subs, really, for, so that they can do the PD as well as the training, right?
Right.
So, then my question is, what is the cost? And is it in the budget?
The cost is probably be about $50,000, I think, for this first year. And we are going to be able to fund it through the new grant that we have. During the course of the year, we talked to the grant manager in DC to see if the Tools program would be consistent with the guidelines and the criteria of the grant, and they agreed that it would be. So, we amended our grant application and that's how we're going to be funding this.
Okay. I remember that there was a $50,000 line item on the budget for Tools. Is that, is this 50 that you're talking about in addition to that 50? So, it's 100 total, or it's?
The source of the revenue has changed, from the operating budget to a grant.
Okay. Mr. Schlickman?
So, it looks like the heart of the program is combining self-regulation and with academic content. And there are, the question was raised Tuesday or Monday night, I'm losing track of time, regarding pacing and end-of-year attainment. And I think the comment was made that it's a little slower getting off the ground in September, but by this time of the year, you're actually in a better spot. Can you elaborate on that?
So, that's very true. And when we start in September, it looks a lot different. The children are involved in a lot of dramatic play and guided play. There's a lot of work around fairy tales and retelling of stories. And children really learning how to get along with each other, work with partners, work with groups, problem solve. They're learning how to regulate, how to wait their turn. But it's all through these activities and games that the Tools of the Mind curriculum provides. There's, and you, through the trainings, you learn about why all of those games help that. And then, the second half of the year, it changes and it, that's one of the things I think about the program, is it's always changing. It's not, it doesn't, it doesn't stay the same for the whole year. It's constantly changing and scaffolding up to, with the children. And then the second half of the year, it becomes very academic. But they're using all of those skills that they've learned earlier in the year, so they're more able to learn.
So, this is really infused in the total classroom routine, from the minute they walk in the door to the minute they leave.
And it's an all, all day long. It's in every activity that you do.
Does this change in the way you're reporting to parents on your children, either through a report card or self-report checklist or something of that nature?
I think, yeah, that's something that we were talking about, and I think that we're noticing a lot of things that the other curriculum didn't allow us to notice. So, although not all of it is reflected in our report card, which will probably eventually need to be tweaked, I feel like we're looking more at their interaction skills along with their academics, but we find those things equally as important. How can they interact? Can they wait their turn? How do they solve a problem with their friends? Do they need a lot of teacher scaffolding still to do that? Or at this point in the year, can they do it independently? So, do you feel like?
But we actually have kept the report card. So, we were still using the same report card that everybody else was using and, like, still able to use it, which I think, you know, for some parents, that was comforting to see that, you know, you're still doing, you know, pieces of what they were doing before, but just in a different way.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
I was just going to ask them if they would talk a little bit about the academics in terms of the benchmarks and where, what you've, what you've, the data you've already looked at.
Sure, data, and then you can say a little bit. So, and I believe you have an executive summary that I wrote that speaks a bit to the question about benchmarks. And we were really committed, as a district, when we took this study on, that our students in the Tools study classrooms would be held to the same benchmarks as the students across the district, because that is something that you, as a committee, and we as a district, have committed ourselves to. And so, we were really curious to see, we looked particularly at the reading benchmarks at the end of the first year of Tools implementation, which was last year. Now, granted, this was one year. So, what we looked at was not just last year, but we looked at three, the two previous years as well, because what we were hoping to see is, were there any trends? Did we see, did things pretty much stay the same, were there some dramatic differences one way or the other? And what we discovered was there were really no dramatic differences in the data, that the way that the children had been achieving or reaching their benchmarks at the end of the year in those classrooms in the previous years were pretty much in concert with what we saw at the end of last year. So, at first, we kind of thought, "Oh." But then we thought, "Oh." You know, we've really changed the way the day looks, we've changed the way the curriculum is rolled out, we've really committed to, as you heard Erica say, kind of ratcheting back at the beginning of the year and spending more time building children's ability to learn and remember on purpose and learn together, and then roll out the academics, which is different from the way we've done it. And we gained all of that and nothing else changed. So, I think that was, that was an important thing to see. I will say that one of the Tools teachers was remarking, when she was looking at the data, that she felt that the children who were ready in kindergarten to stretch beyond the benchmark, to really be reading at a solid beginning, middle, even end of first grade, beginning second grade level, that she felt that there were more children who scored at that level, because she felt that the richness of the curriculum gave them someplace to stretch to. So, that was just one teacher that remarked on that, and I just think it was an interesting, an interesting piece. So, I don't know if there's more you want to hear, if that answered your question. Ms. Thien?
I had a question, and this may be for you, or this may be for the superintendent. A number of years ago, we committed to a lot of open circle training, which is at the upper grades in elementary, though. And I'm wondering if that is still in place, how this program interacts with that, and whether they're complementary, whether that's still active, or this is a transitioning in that we're expecting to see gradually feed up.
Well, I'll answer sort of the administrative answer, then I'll let these guys take it from there. But to be part of the study, we were asked not to use open circle, because there, that is a separate kind of social competence curriculum that is not part of how Tools creates community and creates collaboration and creates problem-solving skills. So, so, right now, Tools, the Tools classrooms have not been using open circle. I don't know if you want to talk a little bit about how you see Tools sort of addressing those social interaction kinds of things?
I mean, I think we're still addressing, like, we're constantly working with the children on problem solving and, you know, they're constantly working with each other, talking out issues. So, I think it feels very similar to the open circle. It's not as formal. Like, with open circle, we, you know, we kind of met, you know, in a very, you know, formal way. So, this is, like, to me, very informal. And I think, as Deb was saying, like, after the study, like, I think this year now it's coming clear how we can take some of the things that we had been using and make them more Tools-like, but that a lot of open circle is, they definitely are very compatible. It's just, you know, a little bit different way, but I think it's still...
I found that in kindergarten, open circle was great, the language was great, but the actual meeting part of open circle was really hard for kindergartners to sit through, you know, a lot of talking. There's not a lot of props or anything to kind of engage them. So, I found that part really challenging for open circle in kindergarten. But I feel like the Tools social stuff is just embedded in what we do, so it's more of just like in a natural moment, because a lot of kids... So it's more of just like in a natural moment, because a lot of kids can walk the walk, but then they can't talk the talk when it comes to outside of open circle. So I feel like it's just more embedded into everything that we're doing and using that common language as well, which is great.
Yeah, and they're always applying those skills to what they're doing for all these games and activities.
Couple quick questions. Have you, has anyone consulted with the other kindergarten teachers in town? What they think? Have they heard about it? What their thoughts are?
And, and, you know, Stephanie Zerchikov is here, too. Her teachers were also part of the study, but they were the control group. They did not have the training. So I would invite Stephanie to also say, if she wants to, but it looks like she doesn't.
It's very enthusiastic. Our team is really want, been chomping at the bit to become involved. And we're happy to be part of it, but we didn't get to be coolified yet.
I know. So I think, Judd, the answer to that is that any time there's going to be a major shift, you know, teachers are professionals, and they take a great deal of pride in what they do. And we have a very seasoned, very effective kindergarten staff here in Arlington. And it's hard, I believe, for teachers who are so professional to think about, ooh, what am I going to need to change? What am I not going to be able to do? So, a- and I'm sure that there are people who are all over the spectrum. I know that there are teachers who are, as Stephanie said, chomping at the bit. Let, just let me at it. Give me, you know, make the decision and train me, I'm ready to go. And then there are, are other teachers who are more skeptical. It's going to be a lot of work. What will it be like? And then there are teachers, I'm sure, who say, I really don't want to do this. I think any time you institute a change, that's the spectrum of, of what we have. But I also know that, that the teachers in Arlington are pros, and they are willing, when push comes to shove, when they're saying, you know, this is what needs to happen, they knuckle down, they figure it out, and they get involved. So I certainly don't, don't intend to speak for all kindergarten teachers. I can't. But I, I know from the meetings that we've had that, that, that people are anxious, but willing to try.
And I noticed that there were a couple of things that you found you would want to weave into a Tools program. But it's interesting, because the comment about open circle, you said you were specifically prohibited from using open circle because it doesn't fit with their idea of. So I'm wondering, to what extent can you weave things in to make the program better? And if you can, will that constrain the time you have in a day with these kindergartners? If you, if you start weaving more things in? What would have to come out?
So, I, I, I thought I knew what you were asking, but I'm not, I'm not quite sure. I know that, um.
For example, you say that, or, or this, this summary says that you would like to see certain issues addressed, such as the Tools math program is weak, or you'd like to weave in Arlington's social studies and science curricula into the Tools program.
Yes.
What would then have to leave the Tools program if those things were had?
Can I make a point? I think, so you were in a study before, where you were actually being quantified. So they had to follow certain rules because they were in a study. And they couldn't muck with, you know, they were sort of testing the Tools curriculum. If they mucked with it, it wouldn't be a good study.
I understand, but my, my question.
So going forward, what will be different?
Sure. So the, the Arlington's early math program is very compatible with Tools. And it's, in fact, already, the teachers who are in the study have been able, with the, the developer's sanction, take the Arlington math program and toolify it. Create, make it, make it fit with this philosophy of the program, but keep the content rich, which is, was one of the concerns, that the, the math program that came to us through the Tools was not strong enough. Social studies, I would, I, I, I would probably have to defer to my, my teachers. There really isn't a, a social studies curriculum per se. And Carrie Dunn and I have been working to identify ways, ways that the curriculum that she feels is important for kindergarteners to have can be woven in. And in fact, one of the professional development days that's left here in this school year, I believe it's in May, Carrie is meeting with the kindergarten teachers to talk about a new unit that she wants to put into kindergarten that, and some of the teachers who are here tonight will be working with her next year to implement that. Does that, does that answer your question, Judd?
My, my last question, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Is, is the time element. Will there be, to, to add all these extra things that you see are not really as rich in the Tools program? How, how will that be adjusted for, for our day?
Sure, so just to be clear, the math is not an addition. It's almost like a substitution. So there's, still is math instruction. But instead of using the, the units and the games that Tools provides, we use the units and the activities that Arlington provides, and you just use it in that math time and in the way that. And I don't know about social studies, how that will work or what would have to come out. Do you have anything to say about that?
A lot of that can be, a lot of the, the social studies curriculum that she's talking about with Carrie Dunn is that social curriculum that can be intertwined into our daily conversations that we have. A lot of the Tools social studies-type activities are about around the world. And where we do the Magic Treehouse series, all of those touch, there's a week with each book that is all nonfiction learning. It's all about, you know, right now it's space, and we're learning about everything about outer space and traveling there and what the people use to travel there. We did the Ice Age and the tools that they use in the Ice Age. So a lot of that social studies curriculum can be intertwined in with those themes. It's just being creative in how we, how we do that. Wouldn't necessarily take more time. Would just be.
Okay, I'm aware of the time. I had one question, and then I think we, if there's anything really burning. I just wonder if you could talk a little bit more about the curriculum. We should be expecting some behavior changes in first grade. And that's what I'm really interested in, and just wondering if you could speak to that.
As we, and again, this is just after one year, but one of the, in your summary that you have, some of the observations from the first-grade teachers included that children, first of all, were much more willing to write. Writing is a huge component of, of the Tools program, and it starts from day one. So what the, the first-grade teachers across the board notice is that children were not afraid to write, that they were much more comfortable, competent. They had something to say, they knew how to use writing as a tool. They noticed that children were able to solve conflicts without help. For example, I was in a first-grade classroom, and children were trying to figure out how to set up, how to get a game started. And in the past, what, what would have become something that the teacher would have to intervene with, suddenly the children stopped and said, let's do rock, paper, scissors. Let's just kind of figure it out, and they did. First-grade teachers noticed more collaborative learning. Children were more readily talking to each other about their learning, helping each other out if someone was stuck. So these are the kinds of things that, that we were seeing in first grade.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hayner?
Really quick, is there any intent to provide upper-grade teachers with reinforced, to reinforce these skills as the children go up? I assume you're not expecting these children to learn in the kindergarten, maintain these things all the way through?
I wish they, yeah, I actually wish they could do that. We were talking to Dr. Liang yesterday, who is in the process of developing something for grades one through three, when that will happen and whether that's something that Arlington would adopt.
I guess I was thinking more of the idea of, I, as a former fourth-grade teacher, coming down and observe the things so that when I see a potential conflict, you just might say, from the other side of the room, rock, paper, scissors, and reinforce it like that. I don't know if that, that's part of it.
Okay. So here's the, the tricky thing, and, and I know we don't have a lot of time. We could obviously talk about this for a long time. But it's, it's really important for people to understand that the underpinning of this is really a philosophy. It's really understanding about teaching and learning. And so it isn't just a, a question of, oh, that looks like a good idea. I'm going to do that in my third grade. It's not going to grow legs unless you really get, as these folks are saying, why this works. And how does this shift not just how I do that, but how I do everything? So, anyway.
Okay. So at this point, thank you very much, and. I thought we already had voted on this, but, okay.
No.
No? Okay.
So I move that the Arlington Public Schools adopts the Tools of the Mind curriculum for all kindergarten classrooms commencing with the next, the 2013, 2014 school year.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay.
Thank you.
Very much. Thank you very much. So, at this point.
What you have at your place is, as you understand, we, we need to have two days of training to begin this. And I put, this is really sort of a first read, three options. And during the next two weeks, I'll actually survey parents and kindergarten teachers to what they prefer. But here they, essentially what they are. One possibility would be to just have the last day of kindergarten this year be Friday, June 21st. Option two would be to just have school, the, the students would stay to the last day of school, which is the 27th of June. But two of those days in the last week, either Monday, Tuesday, or Tuesday, Wednesday, they would have substitutes in their classroom. And they would not be their kindergarten TAs, I might add, because they're going to be part of the training as well. The third option would be a hybrid. And that would be that we, parents who wanted their children to stay through the 27th could choose to do that, and we would have for two of those days, substitutes in the classroom. Or they could choose to have the last day be the 21st. Option one and three would require a school committee vote. So I, I'm just presenting this tonight as sort of a first read, to think about it. I'll do a survey, let you know what comes of that. And then if we could at the 28th make a decision as what makes the most sense.
Okay. Does anyone have any quick questions about the different options? Mr. Thielman?
Do you have a preference? I mean, do you have a recommendation? What do you think is best pedagogically?
I think that the first option has the most, is the better of the, the three because it gives the teachers more professional development time. They would then use the other day and a half to work with, among themselves in planning for next year. I would say, though, that there's probably a lot of parents who, who may not want, I've been counting on the last day of school to be the 27th of June, and that may not be a, a great option for them to have at the, the school year end on the 21st. So it's, the, the thing about the third option is the teachers would be back in the classroom the other days other than the training days.
Does anyone else have any other quick questions? I have one, I just want to ask. So all of these options would ensure the required number of school days for our kindergarteners and our, and hours?
We're so over the number of hours for kindergarten, because we're a full-day program, and the state only mandates a half-day.
Okay. Okay, thank you. So we'll discuss this in two weeks. So at this point, I want to take a side before we move on to the common formative assessments. And because the start of the meeting got messed up, I did not welcome our, our student rep, who is Lucas Munson, who is a senior. He's the senior class vice president, and he also participates in soccer, basketball, volleyball, and a whole bunch of clubs, so I'm not going to, I'm not going to read through. But thank you for coming. We're sorry we had to move you out back in. And I also want to thank and welcome Ms. Foley for being our AAF representative this evening. And also, I didn't get to read my quote, unlike as desired by Mr. Schlickman. I am not going to read the first 100 digits of pi. But I found one that was about assessments, and it's from Douglas J. Etter, who says, "If you don't know where you're headed, you'll probably end up somewhere else." And with that, there she is. We lost her. Yes.
Okay. Thank you. This evening, we're going to review where we are with our assessment program. And in order to do that, I always think that we should talk just a little bit about the importance of assessment and sort of touch base on their major types of assessment. Talk about the current assessments that we have in place and what work lies ahead. In order to do that, though, I always feel like an experiential, having experience is better than hearing it, it said at you. So you could find in your packet, you have a packet of papers that says, "Choose one of the next three do-nows." So there are, it's a white packet that was added to your place tonight, because we didn't want anybody to cheat and get the answers ahead of time. So there are three do-nows there. One is a math, one is a physics one, and there is a humanities one. And if you would choose one of those to do in very quick order, please don't look at the person next to you. And this is how many, many of our classes start every single day. These are examples of formative assessments. So if you would just choose one to do, and, I'll give you about two minutes to do it. Oh, and if you choose the physics one, we have a visual inquiry. About one more minute? Yeah, it would be the other way, but.
No, no, the table's tilted.
The table's tilted, that's, it's rolling off, so. Okay, if you would now turn to a person on your left or right and discuss which of the do-nows that you chose, and have about a 30-second discussion about why you chose it and what you think the answer is.
No, it is.
Yes. I agree, I was thinking.
And I pull it, what will happen?
About 10 seconds more? Okay, thank you. If I can bring everybody back. I know, it's very exciting. And this is why we start off our classes with it, to get students right to work as soon as they come in. Most teachers have these posted right on their boards when they come in, and students begin to work on them. And we'll talk a little bit more about the purpose of these formative assessments in a moment. So assessment is a key part of curriculum and instruction assessment. It's the three-legged stool without one leg, the other two don't sort of work. Good assessment is critical in order to evaluate programs, evaluate, to assess student achievement, and to help raise teacher quality. Summit of assessment helps us to evaluate the effectiveness of programs and curricula, and that is the primarily focus of summative assessment. And when teachers join forces with their students in formative assessment, the process that their partnership generates provides a powerful outcome. We just did the do-now. This is a, this one came from an eighth-grade math class, just so you know. This physics activity comes from our ninth-grade physics classes, and it's based on Newton's second law of motion. And this third one came from one of our English classes here at the high school. So formative assessment is assessment for learning. It provides teachers with information that will allow them to adopt changes in the instruction based on evidence and immediately get benefits to the student as part of the instruction process. Students can also, and this is a very key aspect of formative assessment, students can use evidence to actively manage and adjust their own learning. And tonight, we heard about Tools of the Mind. And one of the key elements of Tools of the Mind is students creating their own learning plans and setting their own learning goals. Feedback in assessment for learning occurs when there's still time to take action. Some of the assessment, and these are very simplistic definitions, but just sort of to make sure that everybody is sort of dealing with the same definitions. Are results that are used to make some sort of judgment. Does this program work? Does this curricula work? Assessment of learning happens at some point in time. We draw, sort of draw a line in the sand and take an assessment at, as that point in time. And generally, the purpose is to measure the level of a student, a school, or a program's success. An overall assessment overview in Arlington. In terms of formative assessment, we use things like tickets to leave, which is a formative assessment that's given at the end of the class, do-nows, which is a formative assessment that's given at the beginning. We use DRA, which is a reading formative assessment, which informs teachers about their students' growth as they move along in the reading process, learning the reading process. Teacher observations can be used as a formative assessment. There may be a classroom performance tasks. And we have two online tools that we're currently using. One is called Play-Doh and the other one's called Symphony to do formative assessment in mathematics. In terms of summative assess, and this is not an exhaustive list, these are some, just some examples. For summative assessment, we have unit and chapter tests and quizzes. We have culminating projects, M-CAS access, which is the ELL assessment. And presentations and debates are other kinds of summative assessments. In your packet, you have both this summary table and you also have detailed information in the salmon-colored packet about all the assessments that we do in Arlington. If you look at this chart, you'll notice that there's a number of, these are assessments that are done commonly across all the grades. So while there are social studies assessments that are being done, I don't want, don't mean to imply by this chart that there are no social studies assessments in the elementary schools, but they're not necessarily common. And that is one of the things we're going to be working on for next year. And I want to now give you some specific examples of how we use information from our formative and, summative assessments at the elementary school and the upper grades. And so one of our formative assessments at the elementary school, as we talked about before, is DRA. And it measures accuracy, fluency, and comprehension in terms of reading. It will determine each student's instructional level and evaluates three components of reading, their reading engagement, their oral reading fluency, and comprehension. It will quickly help the teacher decide what the instructional needs are. And based on the instructional needs, teachers can create a plan documenting which, what each student needs to work on. And once the assessment is complete, the teachers can use this information to differentiate instruction and create instructional groups. And right now, this is happening within the classroom level, but it's our goal, and we'll talk again a little bit about this at the end, that we start to do that across a grade level when we look at that for next year. So that we look at, for example, you know, grade two. And we look at where students are in the DRA, using the DRA in their process of acquiring reading skills. And that we may differentiate groups not between, not just one, inside one classroom, but between multiple classrooms. It's a true formative assessment. It is not a standardized assessment. And there is some portion of this test that's subjective. And we don't calibrate that on a regular basis. We will be creating some new technology videos for teachers to watch and then assess a student and then compare their assessment with the benchmark assessments that the reading specialists have put together. But right now, at, once a teacher is trained, we rarely come back and calibrate it. And it's not meant to be a standardized assessment. It's meant to be a formative assessment. It's also used as a benchmark assessment to allow us to look at what percentage of students have reached the grade level benchmarks in oral reading fluency and comprehension at the mid-year point. An example of a more summative type of assessment would be the fifth-grade assessment where they take a common assessment in math at the mid-year point. It's aligned to the new state standards. And each question is aligned to a specific standard. The new midterm covers all the standards that have been covered by the, at that point in the time in testing. And the results of the question are compared to the results of the same type of questions for M-CAS. So this would be an example of an M-CAS report that you would get from the state. This actually comes from Dallin. And I have put arrows next to a number of standards. And you'll notice that, that we both have the 2000, 2004 standards, which were the old standards before we adopted the Common Core, and the 2011 standards, which are the new Massachusetts State Framework standards. And I want to just call to your attention, you'll notice that there are a number of things there that don't have a corresponding standard. And that's because the standards, they are a-changing. This would be the Excel spreadsheet that we would put student data in from the midterm assessment. And I've highlighted one of the standards that you saw from the previous that matches closely to the standards from the M-CAS test. So it'll give us some indication about how the students might be going to perform this year in the M-CAS test. Because this is from last year's data and this is from this year's data. So it's not necessarily, but it gives us some predictive results. In terms of secondary, these are, this is a summary table. And again, in your salmon packet, you have all the detail of the assessments that we have at the secondary level. And you can see at each major subject area, these are the common assessments that we have at those, at each of those levels. And again, I want to take you through just very quickly, a specific, a couple of specific examples. So the sixth graders this year took a common assessment in math. Again, it is matched to the new state standards and each question is to a unique standard. The midterm covers all the standards that have been covered up to that point. And again, we're going to compare that data that we get from that midterm exam to the M-CAS from last year. So this would be an example of the data that we got from the sixth grade from this year. And you see that I highlighted a specific standard. And then you can see how that relates to the M-CAS standard. So one of the questions that the committee has asked was how, how do we connect it? Now, in this case, we've connected it to the M-CAS. But there'll be other assessments that we will do that will actually create, get connected to the standard. And in some cases, those standards are more national standards. So for like rural language, as you saw before, we have rural language assessments. And those are being checked against the national rural language standards. And then we have science assessments that are happening. But we're going to have to probably look at modifying those because the new science standards are probably going to be approved by the end of this school year. In ninth-grade physics, we have a midterm exam that's based on former M-CAS questions. And those responses are analyzed for trends. And then when we get to the pre-M-CAS review, we modify that review based on the results of the midterm. But we also, I wanted to give you some examples of formative assessments so that you know that we don't just do these standardized assessments. And the formative assessments in physics, we do do-nows, as you, as you got to see one tonight. We do tickets to leave, we do quick writes. They're generally based on either that day's topics or the previous night's topics. And it provides information to teachers on if it's necessary to change, modify, or reteach topics. So here is a do-now activity for all you physics fans out there. And I actually have a physical model. So the question is, if you pull the string at the bottom and the weight wasn't moving, if I pull on the bottom thread gently but with increasing force, what will happen? Or if I pull it suddenly, what will happen? And anybody like to say yes?
Breaks.
Which one?
The top one will break.
If I do what?
If you pull it gently, no, if you pull it fast, the bottom one, top one will break. Bottom one will break.
Is that a final answer?
I think if you pull it fast, the top one will break. If you pull it slow, the bottom.
Well, the correct answer, and I don't have time to go into the physics nor what I have expertise in doing that, is that if you pull it fast, the bottom one will break. And we actually demonstrated this in my office this afternoon. And if you, and if you want to know all the physics about this, just email l@wetters@arlington.k12.ma.us. If you pull it slowly, it actually creates tension in the top string and gives it time so that that string will break first. And it has to do with the speed of which you pull the string. And this would be something where students would have studied the second law of motion. And then this demonstration, they would be asked to predict, just like you were. And then they would actually do the demonstration and then they would be asked to explain their, their answer. The last thing I want to show you before we finish our, then I take questions, is I would like to show you a variety of assessments that are happened in one kindergarten class in one week. And this is a video, we have a teach, we have a number of teachers that have used social media to communicate to parents what their students' outcomes have been on the assessments that have been in the class. And so this is a very short video. It's only about 2 minutes and 52 seconds. And you'll see performance assessments, you'll see teacher observation, and you'll see a number of other assessments that are being used in the classroom. And I think this video is really telling because you'll see a combination of hands-on activities as well as technology being used to assess students.
He loves Razz kids. How engaged they all are.
I want to stop it right there. What you see right, happening right now is that students are using styluses and they're writing, this is a kindergarten class. So they're writing sentences about using iPads. And if you can see, and you'll see it better in the next video, you'll see that for each word, they make one line so that they're almost, so are almost diagramming the sentence. And so this is in kindergarten. That's the first step. The second step developmentally that the teacher's looking for is are they able to put the first sound of the word in? Then the next step developmentally would be like the last sound of the word and then the primary vowel sound of the word. So while, you know, you look at this and it looks very simplistic, the teacher's actually getting some very, very interesting information about what the students are able to do. So, and the other thing I want to say about that last video is that was a student using Apple TV to show their individual work up on the screen.
This is in Arlington?
This is, yes, this is Stratton Public School. Yes, this is a Tools classroom.
Because I didn't know we had iPads in any of the kindergartens.
These videos are actually made with conjunction by the students. All that, all the footage that you saw was taken by kindergarten students at, in Anne Marie Abbott's class in kindergarten at the Stratton School. And, and I wanted to end with this video because I think you see a number of, variety of assessments that we use every day in just a kindergarten class. And so I think sometimes there is a fear that when we add technology into a classroom, we're adding it for technology's sake. And I think that you can see in this video that when it's appropriate and it supports the educational process, we do use technology. But there's also lots of hands-on learning that comes in that classroom. Questions?
Ms. Starks?
As far as the math assessments, is there any plan to expand the math assess, assess, common assessments to be other than just a mid-year?
Yeah, the next step would be, and I, I should have actually talked about the next steps. The next step would be that we would take formative assessments that we could take along the way to make sure that that's going to happen. And we're doing that with, with our Play-Doh system right now. But what you saw was, what you saw in the, was the test. We need to make formative assessments along the way so that we can modify instruction. And that will be our next step. And we'll also have to modify it quite a bit because the new PARC assessment is going to be significantly different than the current M-CAS assessment. And we'll, and we'll have to be, be having common performance assessments to practice. So we'll be, we'll be putting those in next year.
Okay, great, thank you.
Anyone else with questions? Okay, I guess I have one, which was part of what we were trying to do with the presentation was answer one of the, for, the district goals, which is create, and I appreciate Mr. Pierce's iPad here. Create or identify two common assessments at every level in all disciplines to measure student progress in order to maintain high expectations for learning, teacher consistency, and a common focus on instruction. And I'm just wondering how we're doing for that.
With the exception of elementary social studies, we have common assessments in every subject area across the, across the K through 12 continuum. In some cases, there's, if you, if you look at that salmon color chart, you'll see all the detail that's associated with that, that I had passed out to the school committee. I think it's salmon, maybe beige. It talks about all the different assessments that we have. And sometimes it's three times a year, sometimes there's five different assessments. It depends from subject to subject. But we are increasing those and we are well aware that that's what we need to have in place to respond to the DESE in terms of student, district determined student growth methods, measures.
Okay.
What that goal, we, we've had common assessments for a long time. I think one of the things that we haven't had in place is using our, our common assessments as a tool for showing growth over small periods of time or even longer periods of time. And one of the big shifts this year is trying to use what we've even had while we create new ones to do exactly that. So in math, some of that really just comes from having a pre-test. So you can see where the growth is to the, the assessment. What this particular goal is referring to is something that's, it's very much linked to the teacher educator evaluation system, where we're going to have to have two measures of how to show student, student growth. And M-CAS for people who actually have, students are tested, will only be one of the two. So we, we need to do, to do this and I, and, and across all, all curriculum areas. And that has been the focus of a lot of our PLCs this year. I think that we will have them in place by the fall, which was the goal. And certainly from the, there was a memo, and we'll talk more about this later, but there was a memo from the commissioner in February, just laying out that this is some. from the commissioner in February, just laying out that this is something that school districts have to have in place in, in September. And I, I'm not sure that we're going to phase it in, in terms of the educator evaluation system, in all disciplines, all next year, but it is definitely part of the new system. So that's what that goal is really about, not creating more common assessments, but creating assessments that have a, an intrinsic way of measuring growth over time.
Okay. And it was also identified, but you're saying that we have at least two, and some things have many more.
In the major, in the major subject areas, in the major subject areas. We're working currently, actually we have a professional development opportunity next week for music, art, teachers, PE and health are in good shape too, those are not on that, those are also on that, it's green, not salmon, I got the wrong color, it's green. And, and in guidance, we also have common assessments. So the one area that I would say is probably get the most work to do in terms of there's not anything, but it's actually going to be the easiest, is going to be K through five social studies, and that's because of the work that they've been doing in social studies over the, the last couple of years. They just need to agree to what the common assessments are.
Okay.
I guess the last thing I want to say is that, as Dr. Boddy touched upon, we're going to be, need to really be able to analyze this data and capture all these data, this data in a common repository. And that's going to be particularly important as we try to work to six to eight week data teams for next year. And so we're looking at what the best way and the most expedient way would be to put that data together so that a teacher can actually look at the longitudinal information of their student prior to them coming to them, and so that by the time a student would get into middle school, we would have a, a huge amount of data that teachers would be able to use to inform instruction with those specific students, as well as their class.
Any other questions? Mr. Thielman?
We talked about this briefly in the subcommittee, but to what extent are teachers in different schools using the common assessments to, to help each other improve as teachers, to improve their practice, to, to share best practices among teachers?
Well, that is the work we've been doing in our PLCs this year. We, for example, freed up sixth, seventh, and eighth grade math teachers by grade, not all at the same time. This year, for four full days where they took, created these assessments and then went back and looked at the data from these assessments. So there's been a fair amount of work that's associated with it, and we just get more and more of that happening all the time. And we're trying to really establish a formal way of doing that, particularly at the elementary school level for next year.
Anything else?
Do you want to ask one of the two principals? Put them on the spot, I'm sorry.
The superintendent wants you to come to the table.
I don't want to put you, but, but this is something that you see all the time going on in your schools, and I don't know if you'd like to address that, in terms of how teachers are using data in common planning time and to, and to improve instruction.
And to add to that question, is there any in the elementary schools, are there chances for teachers from the third grade at one school to work with the teachers in the third grade at another school, or? Yeah, okay, so maybe talk about that too.
Well, I, I know that as Dr. Boddy said, the professional learning community work that's, that is part of what all our teachers do is all about looking at formative assessments. So, looking at a part of your practice, for example, mathematics, the, the third grade teachers would get together, take a look at what the data, what does the data show about where their children need extra help, and then creating an assessment or using an existing assessment to assess that, and then planning together how to address it across grades, across classes, and always looking at how the children are doing over a short period of time, and then assessing again to see the growth. So, that's something that we as principals encourage teachers to do, give them faculty meeting time to devote to that kind of collaboration. So it is part of what teachers do.
And then what, what we will also do is, at the, at least twice a year, at a faculty meeting, have everyone share the results, and I particularly find the most rich conversations occur when it may not be the outcome that was expected. Then that really stimulates the conversation. I know, third grade this year, why we're both remembering third grade, with our, our staff took the, the Common Core language and their, you know, pre-assessment for the students, post-assessment. So, it's really now become embedded, especially utilizing the PLCs. Across schools, we've done sharings, particularly at the end of the year in June, where all the third grade teachers will share their PLCs. That was a very, we, I was only able to see one grade level, but that also, you know, stimulates conversation among the teachers.
Thank you.
Mr. Pierce?
This is more about emotional feelings of the kids, especially the kids who are going to start like MCAS in, in third grade, for example. I mean, what, what do the principals have to say to the parents or the kids themselves, actually, in terms of managing stress? Stress is, you know, a, a big part of student life, and, and with, with increased assessments or added assessments, you might see an increase in stress.
Well, some of these don't, some of these may not, MCAS certainly, we know that the boys and girls feel it, and one of the things about third grade is the big year to worry, and third grade happens to be a test that isn't particularly as rigorous as some of the other grade levels. So I think that helps the comfort level of the boys and girls, but it does, you know, we, we talk about it, but we all, you know, I know the teachers talk about it, and they try to prepare, and, you know, don't worry about it, but it's, it's tricky. There was something else in my head and I was going to say, just fell right in the floor, so I know she found it and picked it up.
I did. We also have a wonderful third grade teacher right here who could talk about this. But, I would, I would say, and, and Ms. Foley, you can correct me, that what I see is a very mindful, sort of, sort of rollout of what children should expect of the test, starting fairly early in the year. And I don't want people at home to think that all we do is prep for MCAS, but to do well on an MCAS test takes close reading, thoughtful reading, the ability to, to express what you know in writing in a, in a legible and reasonable way. And that's just good teaching, and that's what happens all year long. As the test gets closer, it, teachers, particularly third grade teachers, because it's the first time, are mindful that the children are going to be looking at something very different, those little bubbles and all, so there's time spent preparing children to, to be ready to take the test. And I don't know, Siobhan, if you want to, if you want me to put you on the spot?
No, that's right. I mean, it's kind of a balancing act, really. You know, my kids in my classroom, the, the takeaway they have about MCAS is that they get two hours of recess that day. And, yeah, and no homework. So that's really their big takeaway from that. But at the same time, I don't want them feeling like this is just something they can just, okay, if I don't want to answer it, I don't have to answer it. So it is, you're, you're trying to kind of create that balance for them. And I think, I think over the years, we've, we've gotten much better with that. And the kids are, I, I find the anxiety level of parents and children coming into third grade is much less these past few years than it had been when I first went into the classroom into third grade.
Ms. Hye?
I think you've done a very comprehensive job of letting us know how the data is being used to inform instruction and next steps. The other component I wonder about is as you look at more and more pieces of formative data, when a student stands out apart from their class, so the class trending says we're in one place and a student is not in that same place, do you have the mechanisms in place to actually address those individual needs as well?
Well, if that teacher is fifteen, so if, sorry, it is, sort of, we're seeing a trend, we'll, we'll bring the student up at a TAT and have a discussion and discuss strategies that, well, we tried in this way, tried in that way, and we will, we'll come back in a few weeks and discuss how the progress has been. Am I getting the right answer?
I think so. I, I, I also, I think, I understand the, the concern, and teachers talk about this all the time, that when there's students who are not quite where you want them to be and everybody else is ready to move on, how do you create the time and the space for those children who need to catch up to catch up? And there's a variety of ways to address that, including having one part of your math instruction, instructional time be devoted to small group work, so children are working at stations that are having them practice new learning while the teacher takes aside, it's very much like a reading time, where the teacher will take aside those children who need to shore up those skills. It's very hard to, to know what, how to slow things down and, and, and yet still reach the content that, that is expected. And I don't know, again, Siobhan, if you want to say?
I, I think you were also kind of asking about the other end of the spectrum, of children who are exceeding expectations. Okay. I can only speak about my classroom and probably some of my colleagues, but we do, like for our reading program, for example, the children are, expect, I have an expectation that they are reading every single night, and I am recording on a paper every morning, how many, what book they are reading and how many pages they read that night. And that is kind of individualized, that's differentiated for every child. So, there will be kids who will tell me in third grade that they are reading Harry Potter, and that they read, you know, fifty pages that night. And if this is the fifth or sixth time I've heard that they are reading Harry Potter, and that they read fifty pages, I'm not going to be impressed anymore. It's going to be a conversation of, let's move you on, how about trying something, some nonfiction, breaking you out of your genre level. So I think at the elementary level, I can say that for children who are, and we're also slowly incorporating more in math, for example, more pre-assessments, to get a better sense of children who already understand what it is we're doing. And then we're hopefully going to be creating more extension type of projects and things in that math unit, that children who have exceed, who already understand what the basic curriculum is for that unit, that they will be able to extend it and go a little further on it. But I have a feeling with our new math curriculum, that's probably a little bit down the road.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much. Was there anything else you want to say?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks very much.
At this point, we will move on to the budget. So, first, Ms. Johnson, do you want to update us on the packet that you gave us?
Yes, the packet that you received with your usual delivery, had an updated pie chart, as suggested by Mr. Schlickman, in Pac-Man yellow, I thought that was a nice colorful color. You all, yep, it's on top, I see, at least some of them, yep. And that, I used the estimated chapter seventy from the Department of, from the Department of Education website. I did not use the estimated chapter seventy that's been folded into the multi-year plan for the town, because I just thought that was a nice clean sourced number, and I just used that. And the green is that number from the Department of Ed website, and the yellow is the difference between the entire town appropriation and the chapter seventy ones. I also updated the budget transfer summary. As Mr. Hayner discovered, there was an error in the way the bus driver salaries had been, in fact, their program code. So when I corrected that, because the line items in the budget transfer are based on program codes, I had to make that shift. So all of the doc, and I found one other error when I was fixing that error, which had to do with an object code being incorrect in visual and performing arts. So I made those two corrections. And so I, I've given you fresh sheets on everything that was affected by those two changes. There's been no curricular changes, there's no been changes of strategy, they were just budget code errors that I've corrected. So you have a new revised budget transfer summary. The cost center summary did not change. The program summary did change because of that error with the bus drivers. The object summary changed because of the error with visual and performing arts. And the special ed summary changed because of the bus drivers. They had been booked the wrong way, so they did not appear in the, or initial special ed summary, but they do appear in this one. So those are the revised sheets, and they all say revised at the top. And then I added a new sheet with the requested facilities assessment, and it, I did it similarly to the way I did the special ed pull-out and the athletics pull-out. The difference was that the main organizational budget code in this case was the object, because the object is really what unifies the type of spending in facilities. Whether it's, to take an example on page one of eight, plumbing services. As you see, for FY14 level service and the FY14 proposed budget, the $55,000 resides in the facilities cost center seventy-five line, but the expenditures are all out in the actual physical buildings. And you can see correctly that, you know, in this particular example, Thompson cost center twenty-four has no expenses after FY11, which is when we shut the building. And if we saw expenses in FY12 and 13, that would obviously be a problem. So, I'm glad that works well. So that's why it's different. Typically, my, my method is cost center, program, and object, but when I did facilities that way, it didn't bring us to what we wanted to see. And in facilities, the driver's really the object. What is it? Plumbing services, elevator services, and all the other myriad of tasks that are necessary to keep a building running. So those are the, the new forms that you got ahead of time. And then you also got this on your chairs tonight. This is the multi-year special education summary, and I apologize for how tiny it's getting. At some point, I'm going to have to stop, start lopping off years, but I think it's really important to see the breadth of time on this spreadsheet, because there was a, a huge change from FY05, which is the first year, when we had 176 students in out-of-district placements. And over time, we've gone up and down, but we've settled around 100, and that's a pretty significant change. And, you know, when printing forces me to get rid of FY05, we're going to lose that, and I wasn't ready to give it up yet. But we see nine years of data. It, there's actual data through FY12, and it is the 13 budget in the final column. And what, what I'd like to point out, and all, there's lots of information on the sheet, and again, I apologize for it being so tiny, what I'd like to point out most especially is that special ed doesn't, costs don't rise in a linear fashion. They go up a lot, they drop off precipitously, they bounce all over the place. But the average of this run rate over time is about 8.22 percent, well, it is 8.22 percent across these nine years. So that, that's really what I'd like you to take away from this spreadsheet.
Where is that?
Well, it's nowhere, and as I'm saying that, I'm like, duh, if that was the main point, why isn't it on the spreadsheet somewhere?
Oh, okay.
Mostly because now that I, you know, now that I think about it, where would, where would I have put that information?
So that's the average.
There's so many things jammed in here already. But if you look, you know, it's 14 percent, 10 percent, 12 percent, 3 percent, 5 percent, negative 11 percent, 16 percent, 10 percent. Which works out to 8.22.
One thing that I was thinking about when we were first talking about the spreadsheet and the results of the spreadsheet, a similar one was done a couple of years ago, and that started back really in the two, beginning part, I think probably earlier than '05. But what we had seen was a rate of growth, something more like 10 percent. And so what we're seeing, while we're still not down at 7 percent and lower, we are certainly seeing a trend by the type of programming that we are doing in district is having a very noticeable effect in terms of the rate of growth, even though we're still seeing these fluctuations. And I think that's really important piece of it. So if we were, you know, five years out, maybe we will be seeing, you know, even a, even a smaller average over time.
Do you have anything else you want to add at this point about the budget?
No.
Okay, Mr. Thielman?
Can we just get a clarification? I'm trying to remember exactly the language, about how this I'm trying to remember exactly the language about how this, the, the special education spending increases ties into the five-year plan, what the limits are. Could you just refresh?
Sure. The multi-year plan, which I didn't make a copy for all of you, but this is the multi-year plan that I think many or most of you are familiar with, is projecting that general edu, the, the town share of our costs at the time of the override, were determined at the time of the override. And there's general education costs and special education costs. Even at that time, that special education cost factor at the town did not represent 100% of our special ed spending. It is a portion of it, just like the Pac-Man pie. There's a piece of it that doesn't come from the town. And so that skews everything a little bit. But the decision was made at the time of the override, based on the data we had presented over and over, that special education just could not be managed at a three and a half percent growth rate, based on past history. The decision was made that the portion that was set aside as special ed money would grow at up to 7 percent and the other portion would grow at three and a half percent. At this point, given the projections of the multi-year plan, the assumption is, is that base from the time of the override will continue to, this portion that's been designated as sped will continue to grow at 7% year over year. And the portion that was designated as general ed would continue to grow at 3.5 year over year. We've since layered in the kindergarten fee offset, which is not growing year over year because we generally do not raise our fees year over year. So we're just getting a flat offset for that amount of money. And that is the expectation. The 15, 286, 448, which is the special education portion of FY14, is not, does not represent 100% of our spending in special education. We're spending well in excess of that. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Are there other questions about the budget? I have one. Now I have to find my question again, there it is. Okay, so I was looking at the new charts and I appreciate doing the facility summary because it leads me to ask again, where's the Thompson heat?
The heat isn't broken out school by school and never has.
Right, no, I, I understand that, but is it natural gas or is it electric?
It'll be both.
Both, okay.
It's, it's a gas-based heating system, but there will be util, there will be electricity in.
Right, but what I'm saying is the FY13 expense projections are the FY14 level service and we've got a whole nother building coming online, so I'm confused. And that's what I mean by where is the Thompson heat?
I would not put a tremendous amount of weight on the projections.
Okay.
You know, the projections were made at mid-year, at the beginning of, essentially the beginning of the winter heating season. So.
What I'm trying to say is it seems like the amount estimated for FY14 for gas at least is low.
Well, if you look at the actuals, and I think here's where you tell the story. If you look at natural gas, to take that as an example, in FY11 with the old Thompson functional, we spent 645, 975.
But it was heated with oil.
Not entirely. There was also gas involved in that school. In FY12, we dropped off to 508 for our gas bill. So absent the Thompson, we were only spending 508. We have a budget for 13 of 696. And in my usual hyper-conservatism, I'm projecting something pretty close to that for this year because that's what I'm always going to do. But I think the real tell here is the 508. And the difference between the prior year and the 508 is where the Thompson heat comes back in.
But FY12 was a really warm year, right?
It was.
Yeah.
But there's not, no money there.
Okay, I'm, I guess, I will hope that your ups and downs all even out. But that was my concern is that I didn't see an up chunk in the heat. So nobody else has any other questions about? Okay, so at this point, I think we are, or statements or anything in making about the budget? No. I think what we've done before is do it by chunks.
Go to section four to the revised budget summary.
Yes, we vote out these.
And we vote the large line items.
Do we just vote the buckets? Because I thought we voted the, we did it by chunks before.
Did it by buckets.
Did it by buckets.
Just by buckets, okay.
It's, it's the, it's the budget transfer summary. We vote line by line. It's section four, page one.
I know, it's just.
I believe it's a section right under the packet.
First page after the blue, what you handed out.
Yes.
Cindy found it, I, I don't want to take.
Sorry, I took them all out of the blue and put them in my binder, so.
I like having the change.
Budget transfer summary, that's all I needed to.
And it says revised.
So we're just, so we're approving the proposed budget, the second to last column?
Yes, line by line, elementary, secondary.
So I move approval of the elementary budget of $12,321,631 for FY14.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. I move approval of the secondary budget of $12,258,923 for FY14.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any, any against?
I move approval of the special education budget of $16,017,799 for FY14.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I move approval of the curriculum and instruction total budget of $1,362,709 for FY14.
Second.
Any discussion? All in, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I move approval of the administration total of $2,555,302 for FY14.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I move approval of the other total, facilities, IT, and transportation of $5,936,783 for FY14.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move approval, so you want the, should we, do we approve the total? No, and so just the grants total or?
And you did the approval back in January of the total town appropriation, which I need for the end of the year report. So I think we're good.
We're done.
Okay, we're done.
You're legal.
Is done for now.
Now it goes to town meeting.
Now it goes to town meeting.
Well, FinCom Wednesday night, I hope you'll all be there. 7:30.
When is the night?
Is that next Wednesday?
It's coming Wednesday?
The 20th, yes.
20th, okay.
Next Wednesday.
What?
What's that?
What's the time? 7:45, I'm sorry. 7:45 Wednesday night, the 20th, at Town Hall in the selectmen's hearing room.
Sorry, I have to write. Okay. Thank you very much for that. And at this point, we move on to the coordinated finance stakeholder group update. Ms. Johnson?
Yes, I, I've been serving on this committee since it started over the summer. And the group developed, had some really wonderful conversations and has developed a proposal to develop a governance structure on the town side that we feel will facilitate efficiency, good service delivery, cost containment, and basically help Arlington grow into the future in a, in a positive way. This proposal was brought to an open meeting, and I can't remember exactly when. And last night was brought to the finance committee where it did not pass. There was a split decision, but it was not, was not forwarded by the finance committee. And the group is going to regroup and continue our discussions along this line. I should mention that the decision was made by the group as a whole that the discussion of consolidation, which people immediately lead to the conclusion is a consolidation between town and school, can't even really have a rational discussion until the town goes through a consolidation process. As town manager Chaplaine said last night in front of the finance committee, the schools have a consolidated finance department. The town does not. And so you can't merge something to nothing. You know, that there's too many moving parts on the town side for any kind of rational discussion about a merger to take place. So really, the school's part of this is very much on the back burner. I'm in the discussions as a person who deals with financial issues on a daily basis. I interact with all the other people on this committee regularly. And my presence in the committee has been really helpful in terms of opening up communications about efficiencies and accounts receivable, or, you know, how should we deal with this? Or we're going to do Munis training, or what if we tried this, this way? It's really been a positive group. And I think it speaks to a really necessary step that all of these departments begin working together. Also, as an outcome of this committee, is a decision to do hiring in financial-related positions in a different way, so that all the members in the stakeholder group would have some involvement. And consequently, I was on the interview team for the budget analyst position at Town Hall and spent a day seeing their candidate, their finalists and being part of the team that evaluated. One of, they put them through a very grueling process. And one of the, one of the things they asked them to do was to do a spreadsheet. They were given a task to say, you need to do a spreadsheet to explain this data to a stakeholder group. So go, here's a computer, knock us out a spreadsheet and bring it back. And I don't know whether it was nerves or what, but of the five finalists, three of them had substantive mathematical errors in their spreadsheets, which I'm sure they walked out later and went, no! But those kinds of things are telling because in this kind of work, you're under the gun and those kinds of mistakes in a spreadsheet are death on the floor. And so it was really important when we were vetting candidates that we find somebody who, if they made those kind of boo-boos, would catch them before they, they came out. So the personnel director on the town side is very clever with coming up with some high-pressure scenarios. They also had to interview someone who had a disgruntled town member in their face. Basically, it was a role-play scenario and it was interesting to see how the candidates responded to that. I'm really glad I didn't have to go through that kind of an interview process. I'm sure I would have folded like I had a deck of cards. So that, that hiring process, I think, has a lot of potential for all of us. You know, when the, my position is traditionally hired, it's really very much a school committee, school department hire. But I interact with the finance people all the time. And so it makes a lot of sense that the comptroller, the town manager, the treasurer and all those people, that we all are sort of involved because we're all going to have to play together like a team. So I think that's one of the really excellent recommendations that was part of this proposal. And I hope, no matter what happens at town meeting, I hope that can, can happen in an informal, if not a more formalized way.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hayner?
I appreciate that, thank you. My concern about this whole issue and what's going on is that this has been, as of right now, a two-year, current two-year process in dealing with the consolidated finance, finance beginning in 2011 with Article 51 that was not acted on for almost another 14 months, establishing this, the group that Ms. Johnson was just talking about. I think part of the communication in, I think it's most important when one of our employees is involved with other aspects of the town, that we get a regular update of what's going on just so that we're aware and we're not caught short. Even if there's nothing else, if nothing happened, the last couple of meetings, we do that ourselves in our subcommittee meetings. If we haven't had a subcommittee, we just said, nothing's going on and we move on. The other thing, and I'm not sure if this, people are aware of it and I apologize, I don't mean to talk down to anyone, but the town itself in town meeting has only one charge over us, the school department. They set our budget. They cannot direct us and require us to do anything that we choose not to do. They can hold up our budget if they chose, but that is it. So in, in the charge in, from Article 51 was that the town meeting hereby requests the town manager to research the consolidated input from, I'm cutting some parts out, the selectmen, the school committee, superintendent, the finance committee. It goes on. I will stand corrected, but I was just on the committee just prior to the town meeting. I came board, on board two years ago. I do not remember us as a committee having input, other than when the DOR report came last year. We had concerns about it, what they were suggesting. If that was our, our input, I haven't seen it formalized anywhere. I just want us to.
Okay, Ms. Hayner?
I, and the chair and others can correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought we had drafted a committee letter to the town stating our position on that.
On the DOR.
And we also were involved.
Actually, but it was, it was solicited as, as input and we cited the DOR. But that was, my understanding, our formal input.
But that, that's one year after the request for input. And.
That's when we were asked for input.
Article 51 was in 2011. The DOR report did not come out. I don't want to quibble over this. My major concern is communication, that when we have superintendent or designee or whatever interacting with other agencies in town, I just want to be kept updated. And I don't think that, that has happened. I don't see that as, it was done maliciously or intentionally or anything, that's all.
Okay, I think Mr. Hayner's communicated his concern. I would counter that, oh, sorry, Ms. Johnson?
May I ask a clarifying question? You said when members of the school department have interaction with other agencies in the town, I talk to the comptroller, the deputy town manager very frequently. You mean more formalized bodies or committees or something like?
My understanding, it's, it's been explained to me that your position on this group, consolidated group, was mandated, the word required, out of Article 51. They can't require, they can request it, and that's what the article said. I'm responding to a question. This, when, when a member of our organization is representing the school in that kind of a situation, a request or being part of a board or something like that, I'd just like to be kept updated when it reflects on us. Because this, this particular thing may in the future or has in the past reflected on us.
Okay. Mr. Pierce?
Couple of quick questions. I'm not sure if this is on, on topic or on time right now, but it has to do with the monthly reporting?
No, let's, let's finish this. Okay, does any, Mr. Schlickman, but keep it brief, I'm trying to.
Well, the question is, is that if you can give us a synopsis of the finance committee's thinking when they were divided and did not go for this?
The reasons against it were incredibly diverse and numerous. I can think of at least, off the top of my head, I can think of almost five or six different positions against it that had nothing to do with each other. The people that were for it felt that unified accountability would improve operational efficiency and that some of these positions aren't, that we're talking about bringing under the town manager aren't positions that the electorate is really in a position to evaluate their performance, yea or nay? And that, that there's been a tradition of, as the town manager characterizes it, silos. And, you know, and operationally, it creates some weirdness. I mean, I can say from my personal experience, Munis, our financial system for both town and school, is owned by the comptroller. And so she makes the majority of the decisions regarding Munis when it gets upgraded. And, you know, this year I stepped in and said, you know, we really have to get more training for the school staff. That's never traditionally been done because the comptroller's department owns Munis and so they wouldn't think to train the school department. You know, that's just one of that sort of, you know, it's not malicious. But, you know, the comptroller's charged with certain responsibilities. The financial software is her responsibility and she's thinking about what she needs to get done. It limits lateral thinking is fundamentally the problem.
How split, how split was the finance committee?
Five to 13.
Oh!
Okay, I think, yeah. I think this is going kind of far afield. I brought this up to give a report and I appreciate that Ms. Johnson has been. So the only thing I would say is, is just to counter Mr. Hayner's position, I would say that it's also, I think, a reasonable thought that the superintendent is in charge of, is supervising the CFO and is the one who should be keeping track. And I'm not saying we have to come up, we're not going to have this discussion right now. But I just want to say it's a, I'm not, I allowed you to give your point of view. I'm giving a separate point of view and we're going to put this issue to rest now. And because it wasn't.
Thompson rebuild report.
Actually, we're going to do the tracking report, except we didn't get it until just now. So you've got a quick question.
For which I apologize.
I'm going to bring it up, I'm going to, I was going to put it on next month or next week, but.
Okay, yeah, I was just skimming it a little bit. And I, I have a couple of quick questions. When you look on page three of three, object 87601, court judgment. When you look on page, um, 3 of 3, object 87601, court judgments, damage settlement, right? Just as an example.
Yes. I'm still projecting that we're going to spend the whole thing, even though that's highly unlikely at this point in the year.
Right. That was my question.
That's my answer.
Okay.
I'm still projecting, and you'll notice, all of these, where we're still estimating to budget.
Yeah.
I'm still going with the expectation that that money could disappear between now and June.
And what happens if it doesn't?
Then, that will be part of the, the year-end balances.
Right.
That will, that last year helped to fund our wireless infrastructure, buy the app, the iPad carts for various schools. I mean, that, those become...
Do, do, does the school committee see a plan of, if we are fortunate enough to realize, do we see like a priority sheet as to...
Yes, we made that.
We made that.
We did that, okay.
We voted that a couple weeks ago.
The last, the other question I have is sometimes, you say estimating to budget, when it could be estimating under. Is that kind of getting the same answer?
I'm still, I'm still carrying it to budget at this point, because I think there are too many unknowns to say for sure. I mean, with settlements, as you know, something could settle like that, and boom, the money's gone, and it may not be on my horizon. So, that's the kind of thing I would hold on to. Also, instructional materials and textbooks. My assumption is that every penny will be expended.
Right.
You know, and so, I am thus projecting, even though if we went on a run rate projection, it's likely we would have savings there. But I'm assuming that we have needs in these areas, and we will spend it all. And, and that's basically the differentiation that I make. You know, if I think there's a reasonable run rate, like, at this point in the year, I'm lowering my projections on things like HVAC repairs, because we're coming to the end of the heating season. And we've gotten them working, they're running now. That's the kind of expense that frontloads in when the heat comes on. So, those I tail off on. But something like textbooks, I'm going to assume that we're going to, we're going to buy every penny's worth. And so, I'm projecting that to budget.
And I, last question. Are you concerned about the variances for things like salaries and temp salaries, which are estimating highly above budget?
No.
Page one.
I'm not, because there's, there's savings in other areas.
Okay. Thank you.
And, you know, again, the, the, the budget transfer detail that we voted, I mean, those lines are quite thoughtful, so that the variance stays within the line. You know, typically, you know, we, I expect to see savings in facilities this year, if we don't get another nasty snowstorm or two. And so, but that's also where the line for IT is. And so, I don't need to come to you and ask for a transfer, because it's the same budget line. So, if I'm not spending it on heat, and I am spending it on computers, it's still the same budget line.
But legal and computers wouldn't be in the same?
No, legal would be in, I believe, is in administration.
Okay.
Okay. So, we will bring this up and see if anyone else has any questions next meeting, because we didn't get this soon enough. So, at this point, we have update on the Thompson rebuild.
Well, there's not much more to report than I did the last time. We have had, we have monthly meetings. This last month, the town manager and I, and Karen Tesoni and Dominic Lonzelada, we went on a tour of, of Thompson, just to see, and I, I told you that at the last meeting, and we were talking about having, you have an opportunity to do a tour. In fact, we're also going to invite the whole Thompson School Building Committee to take one. And the recommendation from our project manager is to wait to sometime in April. It, it, you're still, at this point, and some of the floors, sort of having to watch where you're walking, and it's one thing to take a couple people in there, it's another thing to take a big, a fairly larger group. But, so, we're going to look at sometime in April to, to do that. So, at this point, it's, it's, it's going along fine. We have already submitted, I think we were in the stage where putting the, we don't really have to do bids on the IT, only because everything, pretty much everything we're going to buy is off the state contract. Whereas with furniture, we've had to put the bids out, and I believe those bids are going to probably coming in another week or two? Is that when they're coming in?
I believe the expectation was, we would have bid results in time for the April meeting.
Yeah. And, and this was all timelined out, so that we could have the furniture probably start to be delivered sometime in July. We're probably about two weeks off the schedule at this point, and a lot of it has to do with mechanics. And the mechanics are the, there was a slowdown in delivering, for example, the boilers. When we went through the walkthrough, the, the water heater was there, but the boiler wasn't, and there's been a slowdown in getting it. So, that has a, has a domino effect in some things. But even with a two-week, probably, delay overall, we are still, as John Cole, who is the Chair of the Permanent Town Building Committee, has said, "We are so far ahead in terms of when completion date is compared to any other project we've ever done in Arlington." So, he's not a concern whatsoever, and he has that historical perspective on it. So, right now, furniture will be start to be delivered, substantial completion, which is the most important date, they actually still have at the end of June. It may slip a little bit into July, but we'll probably have a better idea at the next meeting. And it's going forward. And I just sort of happened to run into a neighbor of the, of the, that was living right around the corner, and she would just commentate to me how beautiful she thought it was. So, it, it is going to be a very lovely building, and certainly very beautiful inside. And Siwan's going to get to be, be one of the first, first grades in there.
Yep. Can't wait.
Great. Thank you very much. And now Superintendent Report.
All right. I have a few things, and a lot of, this is more informational. We, we did have a difficult day last Friday, and I shared with you the, the email I sent out to parents. But I, I don't really want to go through tonight all of the reasoning of what happened last week. I think that, that there was, I'm not sure that we could have, I think the only way we would've been able to not have had school would have been to have the delay, but there was no indication that a delay was needed at the time we had to make the decision. But what I really wanted to say tonight was, again, reiterating that should we have another storm, that parents really do need to make that decision, and it is an excused absence if this, if you just can't get there. So, we, overall, though, had relatively good attendance, both for staff and for students. So, I, I congratulate everybody and thank everybody for the extra effort that they, they went through, and the time spent in the car to get here. We had people traveling as many, as much as two hours.
I'd like to just mention that a neighboring school had a two-hour delay at Lexington, and my daughter teaches there. Those children arrived, I think, in the worst part of the storm that morning, with that two-hour delay. Superintendents, I think, are to be praised, it's a very difficult decision to make. And the information that you had, you acted upon, I think, justifiably. And the weather man didn't prove right. That's it.
Can I just ask a question? So, I had heard reports of some students at the Odysseum being told that it was not an excused tardy or absence when they came on Friday late because of the storm. And I'm just wondering, will you communicate, or will, will you discuss with Mr. Ruggieri, or how can that? I'm concerned that there's not a district-wide understanding that if this happens, that's what...
Um, I, I certainly will, but I also had sent an email to confirm that students should be able to have to Monday turn homework in, or if they, if a quiz, what, was given that day, that they'd be able to make it up. So, I, I will certainly check that out. At the high school, in, in, you know, honestly, it doesn't really matter, I don't want to say it that way. There are a certain number of days that students, whether excused or unexcused, have in a term. And should there be a need to go over, it's just a question of going in with an explanation. So, on a particular day, to say whether it's excused or unexcused is really not that important. And I don't think people understand that, because it's really, it's really the totality of absences. And even though a field trip, for example, is an excused absence, it still counts toward that bottom-line number. And if you, if, if, you know, it's, it happens in students' lives, that you may exceed that number, and then you just have to then, basically, talk with administration about a waiver on that.
Ms. Hayner?
I did appreciate your sharing with us, your communication, because I did, when a lot of superintendents were being second-guessed, it very clearly described what the process was. And the one thing I'm wondering you could speak to is, right now, there's a projection that there might be a storm next week on Monday, and the MCAS long comp is on Tuesday. And I know that there are some ramifications of any school in the state closes for the weather on Tuesday, in terms of the administration of the MCAS.
Does it shift the day?
What?
Don't you just move the day ahead?
Um, I, I, I don't know the answer to that. There clearly is a, there is a certain level of common sense that has to enter into all of this. And as much as the Department of Education might like to have that sense of total control over the day that it's administered, that may be a problem. It is true that they want to have it administered on the same day because of the topic that's given, unless people are tweeting all over the state as to what the topic would be. So, I don't know, that's something that we'll, we'll have to look into, should that become necessary. It could be that, if that became a situation where it looked like there'd be a spotty in the school closures, they might just take the whole thing and move it a day statewide. Because you can't do it as individual schools. That's the problem.
They, they've actually done that before, but a, a lot will depend on which grade is scheduled for Tuesday, and, I mean, there's always a, a makeup day, and 10th, 10th grade, there's a long comp makeup day. So, if we were for having to cancel school on Tuesday, and it was the 10th grade, then there is a makeup day. So, and those makeup days are always well after snow season.
Any other questions about this?
Something to look forward to. Kindergarten registration. I want to take this opportunity to remind incoming parents, they register their children. Even if they have other children in the school system, they still need to register. And we've gone now through two weeks of registration. Next week is our last week. And, and in fact, we had, we were debating today whether we're going to actually have a, a second day, because the second day next week was designed for snow. And next week's day is Tuesday. So, there is a, first day is Tuesday. So, it, it's important, and we will also try to get that out. It's, it's difficult to get it out to the kindergarten community, just because we don't have their email and access. We've been putting it in the Advocate, and just try to get that information out to all the preschools. All right, so on to some...
So, how, how did it go? Or how has it been going?
It's gone very well. We had, we really designed a pretty good system. The first night, there was maybe 10 people waiting, but we, we moved it along in different stations. The thing I think that's been an interesting surprise to us is the number of people that, that had already come in and done a lot of, done it on, on, online. We had, we thought we would need a whole computer lab, and at most, sometimes, we'd have one or two parents in there filling it out online. So, the level of, I guess what I'm, I'm saying is that the level of usage, using computers for communication, is definitely growing, to the extent that we've had, I don't think we've even had more than one or two requests from anyone to send out a paper packet. So, that's very interesting. I, I can give you more of all of that kind of data, once registration's over. And then, we will be, the, the, we sent out, what's a little concerning at the moment is that we sent out packets of about 465, of which we got back about 25 that were not at the particular, the recipient wasn't at the address that was given. But as of today, we only have 303 registered, and we, we're, we're pretty confident that we're going to be looking at over 400 in the kindergarten next year. So, this next week is a pivotal week for people to get registered. And for people who live in the buffer zones, things are, are date-stamped, so that the waiting list, if there's any, if you don't get your first choice, is based on the date stamp, and lottery among the date stamps.
Mr. Hayner?
Could I ask you, just to reinforce the discussion you and I had about those that are grandfathered in, in the buffer zone, if you have a sibling already in the school?
Yes. If you're already, you're, an older child is already in the school, you are grandfathered, your family is grandfathered into that school.
Thank you very much.
During the snowstorm, we had fiddler on the roof, and the first night, it was pretty snowy. But we did move it the second night to Saturday night, and that was probably a good decision, because it was packed. And I, I just have to congratulate all of the students, and certainly the adults that helped make this production as great as it was. It was, it was amazing. I don't know if any of you had a chance to see it, the voices and the stage presence of these students was exceptional. So, in particular, I want to recognize Jennifer Hernandez, who is a sixth-grade teacher, who was the director, and Greg Kandakis, Corey Gaffney for music. One was producer, one was the music director, and the choreography was Randy Flynn. Really exceptional. And coming up is Grease at the High School, the first weekend in April, 4th and 5th. We had, speaking of music, we had, our, our music program is just exceptional. And you know that, the community knows that. But another affirmation of that exceptionalness is that Tina D'Agostino and his AHS Jazz Octet, and he, he decided to go into the Berklee International Jazz Festival with an octet this year, and they won first place. There, there were different categories for instrumental and orchestra and so forth, but he, he entered into the, was 13 other small combos in this. And of course, there's hundreds of people that compete in this international competition. The score for the octet overall was 98 out of 100 points. So, they were just, they also won, one, one of our students won the outstanding musician prize, and the other, the superior musician prize. So, it's exceptional. And so, congratulations to all these students. And I, I think that article will be in the Advocate. We also had another outstanding performance in the National History Day. I don't know if you remember, last year, we entered national history competition for the first time. And one of our Odysseum students won first place. So, this year, there were a number of entries into, into this, both from the Odysseum Middle School and from the high school. And so, they entered the Eastern Mass Regional Competition, and a, a team, both from the high school and from Odysseum, are moving on to the states, which will be happening in April. And for the Odysseum Middle School, the, what, the category that they were very successful in was original website category. So, they're creating websites on a particular topic, and it, for the Odysseum Middle School, the title was "The Oxford Meeting Darwin Challenges Creationism." And at the high school, the title was "The Trial of Peter Zenger, Press Libertarian." No, liberation. Press liberation. So, congratulations to all of them, and, and congratulations to their, their advisors. At the Odysseum, it's Allison Sansonito and Jason Levy. And at the high school, advisors were Ian McKay and Amanda Camerio. So, we just, we just continue to, our students to continue to do very well. And so, congratulations to them all, and again, congratulations to their advisors and teachers. That's it.
Okay. Actually, so, we, oops.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. The, um, thank you. One of the things, you're all aware, because we've been talking about this for quite a while, there is a new educator evaluation system that is going to be part of the reality of school districts across the Commonwealth. Some school districts have already begun, raised to the top districts, and even the year before that, were some of our, some of our urban districts. So, in Arlington, we have been working this year, and, and I will give a lot of credit to Laura Chesson and to Linda Hansen for organizing a task... Chesson and to Linda Hanson for organizing a task force that is a very collaborative group of teachers and administrators, learning about the new evaluation system, and many of them participating in a pilot. There are pilots going on at each one of the schools, in each one of the departments of a teacher and a principal, and actually, in some cases, some principals couldn't say no, and they may be working with eight teachers in a pilot. We have all of the curriculum leaders and assistant principals and principals doing, working with at least one, if not more, teachers in a pilot. So, we had talked about at the beginning of the year that I would be doing a pilot with you. And it's, it's really not, I want to separate, it's really not an evaluation in the same sense as we've been doing the annual. It's really an opportunity to understand by practicing what this looks like, understanding the rubrics, understanding what kind of evidence that you would use to say that you're performing at a proficient level. So, what I would like to do is to have us participate, and it's just as we're doing throughout the whole district, because we're going, it's a learning experience, so that we can see where the, what things we need to do and think about when we actually do more, next year we move in doing it across the board. So, I was proposing that next, what we're going to meet with the, we're going to meet with Curriculum and Accountability Subcommittee before the next meeting to talk about what this would look like, and then present it next meeting so that we can all practice together in a very limited way over the next two months.
Okay. Cool. Great, okay, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Haim?
Going forward from that, that concept, I would like the committee to consider and be prepared to discuss a timeline for the actual superintendent's evaluation next year prior to us going for summer break, so that we can be together in a good position in September to go forward. Just, I'm going to an MASC conference on Saturday, and it's mainly dealing superintendent evaluation. I've been talking with Dr. Bodie on again, off again, we keep coming up with questions that we need clarified before we get into the full...
But you're not saying do this at the next meeting?
No, no, no.
Okay.
I'm asking people to put it in their mind, end of May, beginning of June.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. So, at this point, we go on to Subcommittee Liaison Reports, Policy and Procedures?
Subcommittee Liaison Report.
Okay, Budget, we have done the budget.
Yes, and we met, we went over the budget and made sure that we were ready for both the Finance Committee meeting, again, reminder, it is Wednesday, the 20th, at 7:45, and the opening, or whenever we get in front of town, meeting. So, and we felt like we were prepared for all of those, so it was a fairly quick meeting. Can I also report on Arlington Youth Health Safety Coalition? Sure. It's not on here, but it's one of the things that I attend, and that is a coalition of groups throughout the town who are focused on keeping our children safe, primarily with drug and alcohol abuse. And this year, they are revamping how that is run, and Karen Dillon and I will be serving as co-chairs for the coming year. Her focus is getting high school students involved, and my focus is going to be on parent involvement in that, and kind of coming together and figuring out how all of those pieces can work together.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Ms. Haim, Community Relations?
Community Liaison Report.
Okay. Curriculum Instruction and Accountability?
We met on Monday, March 11th, and we talked about two items that were on the agenda tonight, the formative assessments and the tools of the mind kindergarten curriculum. We also heard a presentation by the Superintendent's Diversity Task Force on some ideas they'd like the superintendent to consider in the FY14 goals. And so, Dr. Bodie made note of it and is going to take into account as she formulates recommended goals for us for next year. Our Subcommittee meets again on Monday, March 25th, at 5:30 PM here in the School Committee Room to talk about the pilot that Dr. Bodie just talked about, and to talk about retail, rethinking teaching and...
English language.
Teaching and something.
Equity in teaching.
Equity in teaching, for English language learning. Yeah, so, there you have it. Retail, I thought I had it. So, that's going to be, we talking about that, and that's, and Dr. Bodie talked a little bit about what that requirement is for our teachers.
Okay. Facilities?
Nothing on facilities, but I attended the Metco Day at the State House yesterday, and spoke to both our Representative Goble, the aide to Representative Rogers, and the aide to Senator Donnelly. All three are committed to support a level-funded budget. My understanding, they're still looking at the increase that Metco itself has asked, but hopefully, the good news is we'll at least have the level-funded budget.
Okay.
It was a wonderful day.
Okay, Legal Services will be meeting next, in the next two weeks, I hope, we have the schedule. And then, as Chair, again, I give the notice to everyone that you need to submit your willingness to serve, and I would point out that right now, you're missing a secretary.
No. You said you would do it.
I, that was not intended.
That's what it says.
I know, that was not, I, I...
Too late, you wrote it down.
Says right on there, I got it. I know, you said you would do anything we elected you to do.
Oh, God.
What you're saying is you'd like someone else to put forward that they would serve.
Yes, I would like someone else to put forward, I am going to withdraw. Okay, so, or else volunteer you.
They're not jumping out of the woodwork.
Consent Agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the committee so requests, in which event, the item will be considered in its normal sequence. Approval of warrant number 13127 dated February 28th, 2013, total warrant amount $773,966.47. Minutes for approval, February 14th, 2013.
So, move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and Secretaries report, Ms. Haim?
There's nothing to report this evening.
Oh, okay. At this point, we, I need a motion to re-enter executive session.
Got us right back on track.
So moved.
Second.
Do we, we need to reread it, right?
We will.
Yeah, I'll reread it. To conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiation with union and/or non-union personnel, or contract negotiations with union and/or non-union in which, if held in an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect, to conduct strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation in which, if held in an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect. Collective bargaining may also be continued. Update on superintendent contract negotiations, Kathleen Bodie, superintendent, and we will be exiting only for the purposes of adjournment. Motion?
We already moved into that.
Oh, okay. Dr. Schlickman?
Aye.
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 Aye. We now go on to executive session.
With a late start, we finish on the button. Congratulations.
Bob Kersey is amazing.
Madam Doctor Chair.
You don't double them up.
Dr. Madam Chair.
I didn't either.
Dr. Madam.
Thank you for coming.
You're still on there.
Nice.
You're the best man, the first one to stay the whole week.
Thank you.
Did you know you could sneak out?
Oh, actually, Diane, I need to talk to you.
Thank you.
Sure.
You can do whatever you like with him, there are souvenirs of your wonderful experience.
If you leave them there, they will be ready for you. How's that?
All end up less than what I go down.
You make really good paper airplanes.
Sally, you're talking home experience.
No, 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 never.
Dump them on your feet.
That's what I say, I mean, that's just the way it is.